One more time, meaning as gold the order I'll leave the pledge of the weekend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing one nation under God, and that is law and order, with liberty and justice for all. And we go. Thank you, Mr. Ron. We'll need a roll call to determine if we have a form tonight.
Prue.
Here.
Tepley.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Melby.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Downs.
Here.
Cairns.
Here.
Excellent. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Once the council has a moment to review, entertain a motion to approve. What are we doing for both sessions?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the council minutes as presented.
Motion for Mr. Melby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs. Any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Again, once the council has had a moment to review, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
Motion from Ms. Tepley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. McCarthy. Any discussion of tonight's agenda? Hearing none at all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval. Agenda is approved. Okay. Next, we have city and utility department head reports of concern. I'm going to start with Scott.
Good evening. Utility wise, wastewater, your bill is being reduced starting in January per thousand. Today, we're at $16 per thousand. It is dropping to $14.35. So that is in effect right now. I'll continue to try to do our best to keep rates under control and reviewing them as much as we can, especially with wastewater. Into your inventory, all the departments are working on, working closely with the Frontier project. I'm sure everybody's seen lots of overhead and underground crews in town putting fiber to the distribution portion. Sorry. I just like talking. So lots going on in Frontier. Had a lot of residents call and we've been out answering the questions. And we've got the contacts there at Frontier. If you do have issues, just we'll get you to the right people. Our purchase with the city and the utility, the grapple has already been used quite a bit between the streets, the parks, and the electric utility. So that's what I'm worried about. Got a list of 40 trees from parks that we're going to partner up and remove within the city. Utility wise, we are cross training between the departments, breaking down those silos internal to the utility with water with all three departments so we can cross train. In the office, we're not replacing the office manager or the account coordinator. Angie and Grant have done a great job stepping up. I'm spending a lot more time in there. So we are on a trial with two in the office. Our audit is starting this week and got confirmation January 21st and 22nd. We will be removing the lights in the park with the power distribution folks from Southwest State.
Thank you. Well. Excellent. Mr. Williams was zoning. What we have going on there?
All right. So we're still chipping away a little bit at the past permits that were pulled. We're kind of going through categorizing them per parcel. It's going to be easier in the future to be able to pull out that parcel number and find out exactly what permits were pulled, kind of what activities were done on that premises. While doing that, we have found some expired conditional use permits, which we are working on and everybody's been pretty willing and accepting to go through and get everything fixed for us. So hopefully that will be on our next month's board finding commissions.
Excellent. Thank you, man. We need to cross the room with the microphone again, please. Mr. Lastburner.
All right. Just a few quick updates from economic development. We continue to work closely with WDC, Wisconsin Economic Forum Corporation, on community development investment grants. I reported at finance that we're finally bringing a grant to a close that involved, when I was still a city county employee, we had been able to secure a grant for Rock Bridge and I'm assisting the county in closing that out. So we finally received the last payment of that grant. I believe it was last week and we're working on getting that distributed to them. And then we'll do the closing paperwork and have that wrapped up. We also got really good news today. We had a preliminary application go through the process at WDC for some grant funds to assist in the redevelopment of the old Gables building, restaurant. So we're hopeful that we can continue to move that process through. We'll have to come to council. Council will have to decide whether or not they want to be the pass through or the agent on that grant with WDC and the client. So we're excited to be able to bring that to you and present it to you here in the near future. And as the public should be well aware, the council did issue a request for proposal for potential hotel development in the Orange Street area. And Darcy and I, our office continues to work on that process to try to find the best match for a potential hotel development there. On the public works side things, of course, you've got the snow removal, ice removal. I certainly noticed in review of the time cards of the streets department, how they fluctuate greatly and how often our guys are out there in the middle of the night being called in for different things, especially in ice and snow weather, Saturday hours, Sunday hours. So I'm appreciative of them. And then, believe it or not, you know, it doesn't take too long to wear out some of the equipment that we see every day and think it probably doesn't take a lot of maintenance. For example, the blades on a snowplow. So they actually wear out fairly quickly. And when you have a series of snows that we just did, actually wears a blade out on a truck and you have to go through and replace all of them. So snow removal, parts, we're doing a lot of forward planning on things like how we can maybe minimize some of our mowing. They're doing maintenance on different picnic tables and waste baskets that you would see in the parks all summer long. And so there's just a various number of things that are taking place throughout the winter season. So I think that's enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What do we need to know from the city clerk's office?
So we've been busy collecting tax payments. We have a new online tax portal. Oh, sorry, Jason. All right, there you go. We have been busy collecting tax payments. We have a new online payment portal that we've been working on the last couple of months, getting that set up so people can actually pay their property taxes online. That also incorporates dog licenses. So the dog licenses will be paired with the property to make it easier if the police need to find an animal to get them home. We also have four council member seats that are open this spring. We have candidates for each one of those four seats now have officially turned in their paperwork. The deadline has passed to get on the ballot. We have the paperwork, but we don't have to have a primary for our local election. But there will be a spring primary held February 18th for some state seats that will need to be held. So the council members will actually go to election on April 1st.
So hold that microphone. So the incumbents who are seeking reelection, could you please tell the folks who they are?
Yes, absolutely. So we have Ms. Karen Tepley. She's running for District 1 again. She's moved. Then we have Ms. Walters. She is running for District 3. And then we have Mr. Downs, who's running for District 4.
Thank you for that. And on that point, that means Mr. Chambers seated to my right, who is currently serving in District 2 and will until his term expires in April, is not seeking reelection. So we will do some fun stuff for her in your last one. But first opportunity, thank you for your service and also just to let the people know. Morris here a few more times and then he's not, which leads me to the next thing. We do have a new candidate in District 2 and she's here tonight to take notes and learn about what's going on in the meetings that lead up to the election. And if you would do what you're most comfortable with, raise your hand or stand, Ms. Rachel Schultz. And I wanted to thank her for stepping up and also to the three incumbents seeking reelection. Best of luck, everybody, and thank you for your service. Okay. Ashley.
Tonight, I just want to share that we do have a few positions open at the city. The buildings and grounds crew lead. We're seeking to fill that vacancy as well as our financial officer. And then we have rec coaches as well as a basketball scorekeeper, part-time position open. So if you all know anyone, please send them over here.
Excellent. I think I got all the department heads who are present. Looks that way. Okay. Excellent. Next, mayor and all the persons. Community commission board reports and comments and/or items to be discussed in the future. Meaning, Mr. Ron Tru.
Just a couple of things from tourism. One, Henrietta Township has now adopted the room tax, so that is online. The village of Casanova will be finalizing similar in very near future. And just simply would like to again bring up and make everyone aware that we need to be keenly aware as a whole community, county, to make sure the Pine River is cleaned this summer and that a plan is in place so that we are prepared.
And the reason for that is?
Mark McCauley is not going to be doing Pine River paddling, too. So they'll have to work around that.
I did hear from a local gentleman who's considering continuing the business, but told me right away he won't be able to do the cleanup of that market. He's just physically unable. So yep, understood. And I guess we'll put that out to anyone in the community, not the city government. Thanks, Ron. Karen Tepley.
Thanks, Mayor. From the library board, Director Stacy Filla has been appointed to the governance board for the Parker School. So she said that's going well. And she continues to work with the Rio Pilot Project, working with CISA III. And that kind of tracks the reading from zero to five years, five years of age. So once you get them started, we intend to continue. Then we also received resignation, retirement, I should say, from Mary Peterson Smith. So she turned in her two-week notice. She will stay involved with other aspects in the library, so we're happy about that. But we'll miss her on a daily basis. So that position will also be open shortly. And then from historic preservation, I received the last email with the final two questions for the plaque for former Governor Vernon Thompson. So that should be well on its face. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Tom McCarthy.
Nothing to add, Mr. Ryan.
Mark Chambers.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Melanie Walters.
So a couple agenda items we'll have tonight for personnel, but I would just like to take an opportunity as the chair of personnel, because this is our first meeting of 2025, to just express my appreciation for all of the employees of the City of Richland Center. As council members, we roll in here a couple times a month for some committee meetings and this meeting and say our yays and nays. But at the end of the day, it is our employees that are doing the day in and day out work, making sure that the city is chugging along. So I appreciate the hard work that everybody put forth in 2024 and I am very excited to look forward to working with everybody in 2025 to be able to just keep moving the city forward. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kevin Melby.
You'll go for me later.
I want to play something out. I saw you last night in an event at the High School for Partners for Prevention.
I saw you, too.
You have a role there evidently, sir.
I do.
So tell us about that.
The Park Prevention is focused on keeping youth substance free. They just received their second five-year grant. Joined for lots with the president, I am the vice president and it's a good program. We had a presentation last night.
Yeah, I did see that and I'm grateful to do that. But I wanted to thank you for what you're doing, the whole group of you are doing, among other things, because it's a list. You folks are working with young people in the community, trying to teach them how they have good choices when it comes to whether to try tobacco, alcohol, things of this nature. There's a lot behind that. But one thing that's been implemented by that group in recent years is compliance checks, meaning alcohol sale compliance checks at low-grade bars and so on. I believe when that started, the success rate wasn't so good.
I believe the first attempt was 30%.
30% actually ID'd the kit.
Correct.
How about now?
Either they either ID'd the kit or they ID'd and didn't do the math correctly and realized that the child was under 20.
Okay. So how about now?
The last one we had was 90%, 90%. We have hit 100, but the last one I believe was 90%.
So that's because that group has put consistent effort into these things.
There's a lot of education.
A lot of education. And I just wanted to make sure the public knew that was happening.
Yes.
And to give credit where it is due. So thanks for your help.
Absolutely.
Mr. Steve Downs.
I have two things tonight. First, I would like to address either Ashley or Amanda. I'm not sure which one. And I would like to suggest that the packet formula or packet format include not only the agenda, but also the minutes of the previous meeting.
I think they should be available in the packet right now.
They're not in this, in the most recent, in this meeting.
Maybe if you hit refresh on your browser, it might appear.
Let's look at it. Do you want to do that or should we just look at your tablet when we get down here? Which one, whichever way, because the minute should be in it.
Yeah, okay. We can update it.
Okay.
But I, and then the other, the other thing is I would like to recount our esteemed outgoing president's accomplishments. He took the 2% inflation his predecessor left him to a 40-year record high of over 9% and then bragged about reducing it when it started back down. He canceled the border wall construction, started selling off materials taxpayers paid for at pennies on the dollar. He opened the southern border to import some 11 million illegal aliens, at least some, maybe many, which are convicts let out of prison or mental hospitals. Then he used taxpayers' money to feed, house, clothe, educate, and entertain his illegal aliens. He got us out of Afghanistan in the worst way possible, costing 13 of our brave service people their lives and giving away Bagram Air Force Base and $80 billion worth of our best military gear. On day one, he shut down oil and gas leases in federal land and canceled work on the Keeson XL pipeline, protect us from two-degree hotter climate in the next 100 years. Good job, President Biden. Boy, I almost forgot, Hill said, called people who supported real IDing President Trump garbage. In honor of these accomplishments and his characterization of the majority of we the people, it is fitting and appropriate to rename and rededicate the President Joseph R. Biden Municipal Landfill. Therefore, I'd like to add this item to the next month's agenda to collect public input and a possible balance.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. Mr. Cairns.
Nothing, Mr. Ryan, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Moving on, we have the treasurer's report. The council review that once you've done a settlement. If there are questions, please ask them. If there are not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Ms. Walters. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Mr. Downs. Is there any discussion of the finance report or treasurer's report? Hearing none, let's have a roll call on that.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Motion is here.
Next on the agenda is payment of bills. Let's have a moment to review or entertain a motion to approve.
Ashley, they are not showing up in the packet. The minutes on? No.
The bills.
Oh.
It's because that was.
Okay, my bad. I think so. But they say they don't have it.
They should be in there. I thought they were showing up, but.
I apologize. Very fun.
Oh, they are.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm free.
We need to read on the city utilities treasurer's report.
That one's informational.
That's just information only for the council. Did you want to approve it?
No, just, maybe you missed it.
No, I didn't. Just every time I've ever brought it, every time I've brought it up, I have that response.
Trying to, the rate reduction Scott just talked about.
Yeah, right. So can the council see the bills?
In finance. They're in finance. In finance.
They're in the packet now. The council packet is refreshed.
I just need to.
I'll make motion to pay the bills.
Motion for Ms. Tepley. Is there a second? There was a second. I did not hear it. Does that need a second? You can do that.
Sometimes what happens with the program that we use when you're not seeing things
Ashley, could you explain the recent county bank payment on 11/124?
I believe so.
It's a loan.
It was a final payment on the line.
Final payment on the line.
Yes.
Thank you. It does say final payment. That's what I was asking. Thank you. I'll second the motion to pay the bills.
Second from Mr. Melby. Is there discussion of the bills?
Jason, what's the airport lighting? I see it says windsock lamp, but I'm curious as to the price of a windsock lamp.
Seems to me that that was, I don't remember. I remember going through the approval process. I don't remember the exact number. We had a windsock that had deteriorated to the point where it was no longer hanging properly. And so it wasn't helping calculate the wind rates. And so they are expensive. What was the total on the invoice?
What's the vendor?
$1,001. $1,001. I believe that was for two. Is that correct? Should reflect there or probably doesn't reflect there. It was for two windsocks so that we had one that we replaced immediately and one in stock in case the one that we have there rips off again.
Further discussion of the bills? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Next on the agenda, finance committee recommendations and actions. Mr. Ryan Cairns.
Item five, purchase of a new chipper for Public Works. Finance met correctly before council. And the good thing about this is we have city utilities working with Public Works to share the cost in a new chipper. Both departments use it. The current chipper that we have is 25 years old. And so two bids were obtained and the one that we're recommending from finance is the same make of the current one. And the current one will be sold and then that money brought back to the city. In your packets, you can see the two different bids and the specs. My motion would be to approve the purchase of a new Bandit CD90 from Brooks Tractor for approximately the city's share is $29,754.60 using funds from the budget 2025 outlay.
The motion from Mr. Cairns. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Tepley. Is there discussion?
Ryan, was the decision to go with the Bandit just simply because that was the same one that we had? Was there a difference?
The main reason is from the pictures you see there, there's a collection box in the back, so it can be hooked to any of the one-ton trucks. The other one that was brought does not have a collection box, so you have to have a separate truck.
Got it.
Which requires more work.
Smart.
The current one has a collection box and that's the main reason.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Item six, sale of 2011 Zamboni 200 from Buildings and Grounds Equipment Fleet. Some of the background here, Jason, now that he's director of Public Works, has been going through our fleets and things that aren't being used or liquid air selling on Wisconsin surplus. And there's a Zamboni that hasn't been used for years, which is in really good shape. They retail for around $16,000 a day and having this used Zamboni that will probably bring quite a bit of money on Wisconsin surplus and we don't use it anymore. So motion to approve the sale of a 2011 Zamboni 200.
Motion from Mr. Cairns. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Melby. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Prue.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Item seven, sale of a 2011 Ford F-350 truck from Buildings and Grounds Fleet. If you look in your back there, look at the screen there, you can see there's a 2011 Ford F-350 that has substantial wear and tear on it. It's not a main truck that's used in the fleet. So Jason, like I said, has been looking at our fleet and getting rid of unused items. So this is another one. So my motion would be to approve the sale of a 2011 Ford F-350 truck.
The motion from Mr. Cairns. Is there a second?
Second. Second?
Second from Mr. Downs. Is there discussion?
One thing.
Yes, sir.
Can we make sure the decal is removed?
I was just going to say that. I was actually about to say that. If we can make sure that any markings on that vehicle that indicate the city owns it are off it before it leaves our possession.
I asked the same question in finance and Jason has reassured me that that will happen. So if it doesn't, we know who to.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Is there discussion?
Is that a dump box on it, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Looking for a truck, Mr. Chambers?
Well, not many. I know people who are, so.
There you go. Okay, any further discussion on this one? Okay, we'll need a roll call, please.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Item eight, caution for airport runway repair. This has been to Public Works, and it was Finance Committee tonight. The runway is in need of crack seal repair, and it is a split, an 820 split with the state, and we need to spend some money to get the preliminary work done before this happens, and my motion would be to approve $4,000 sponsor commitment for the Richland Center Airport 2025 Crack Seal Project.
Okay, we have the motion from Mr. Cairns on that one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Tepley, is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Number nine, 2025 contract award for the shared ride taxi program. Someone want to talk about this?
Yep. Ashley, do you want to explain?
Sure. So as you're aware, we participate in the shared ride taxi program through receiving a money for and receiving state and federal dollars in the form of a grant reimbursement. We had an existing contract that expired as of 12/31/2024, so working closely with the DOT, adhering to the Federal Transit Administration's requirements. We went through an RFP process where we solicited proposals for, from vendors. We did receive three proposals. Unfortunately, due to some delays, we're unable to establish a contract prior to January 15th. So therefore, in consultation with the mayor, a special session has been scheduled for January 15th to review, to consider that contract award and establish a contract. However, in the meantime, since we're outside of a contract, the city's not eligible to receive grant reimbursement for the shared ride taxi program. So in order to prevent a lapse in services, the city would need to consider, so you would need to consider whether you'd like to fund the shared ride taxi program in the interim. So in looking at past invoices and use of the taxi program, I'm requesting that you would consider approving up to $10,000 to fund the shared ride taxi service with running until a contract is established.
Okay, and I want to make a point here, Ashley touched on it, but to make sure the public understands this. What we're doing is we're following instruction given to us by the State Department of Transportation, correct?
Correct.
And that date of the 15th came to us from them?
Correct.
Okay, so that's why we're meeting that night, and that's why we're not doing this tonight, is we're doing what we're instructed to do.
What we're required to do.
That, very good. Okay, so in this case, entertain a motion. This came, well, if you want to do the same motion you did the first time, Melanie, or you got Ryan doing, to have the city allocate up to $10,000 to fund the taxi service until the 15th to avoid a lapse in service, and that would be from?
Unallocated contingency.
Unallocated contingency.
I'll make that motion.
We have the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Tepley, any discussion on this one?
Where are we sitting budget-wise in the unallocated contingency?
Since we're just beginning the year, we have approximately $40,000 available.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Next up, Personnel Committee Recommendations and Action. Melanie Walters.
All right. Item 10, Public Outreach Services Contract with Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. This contract, what the Public Outreach Services would be is, since the city has a lot of ongoing projects and initiatives that we're working on, Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission would assist us in doing public outreach communications, which would include creating press releases, radio content, social media, basically to kind of keep the public abreast of the projects that we are working on. This contract would be for a six-month time period, would go to June 30th of this year, and then at that time, the city would reevaluate whether we would like to continue this, or if this is something that we could potentially move in-house with our own staff doing. And the estimated cost is going, for the six-month time period, is $3,350. Ashley, I didn't know if you had anything additional you wanted to add?
Sure, yes. And so we did contemplate this in the 2025 budget, so it is budgeted for, money is available for doing this. And another component of this contract is working jointly with the county. Southwest has already provided this service for free to an extent, where both myself and the county administrator have been meeting with Southwest on a weekly basis, discussing about events happening or things we'd like to, information we'd like to get out, and both at the city and the county level, providing more information to the public, and more consistent and proactive. So it's actually a really, it's a really positive initiative where we're working jointly with the county as well, to make sure that we're sharing good information and routinely doing this.
Okay, what's the dollar amount again? How was it indicated in the budget?
Do you mean where is it?
It depends.
It's under Community Development Miscellaneous Expense, and we did budget for the full year, but we did not, did not know if we want, as Melanie stated, to continue this for an entire year.
So we did discuss this at Personnel, so my motion would be to approve the contract between the city and Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission for Public Outreach Services until June 30th, 2025, not to exceed a cost of $3,350, and it would be funded from the Community Development Miscellaneous Line Item project.
Thank you. We have the motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, is there discussion on this topic?
Question, ma'am.
Go ahead.
So you mentioned that the city and the county were working together on this. Do the county have contracts similar to this?
Yep, they have their own separate contract.
Separate contract. About the same?
Yes.
Price and whatnot.
Good. Further discussion? Okay, we'll need a roll call.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
May.
May.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, item 11, reclassification, reclassification of Municipal Services Specialist from a limited term to a permanent. So when Jason Glassbrenner was appointed the Public Works Director, he took on a dual role. So he is not only the Public Works Director, he is also the Economic Development Director. We recognized that there was a need for him to have some assistance, so we created a limited-term position to help him out. We hired Ms. Darcy Perkins for that position, and I must say, she has been an absolute rock star in that position. If, me personally, if I could clone her, I would give one of her to every department. She has just taken the bull by the horns, and she has helped out Jason, and I'll, I'll give him an opportunity to speak to this. You know, he, he gave an entire list of accomplishments she's already done in her short time here, you know, from grant writing to RFP writing, which has saved the city money, because we haven't had to contract with an outside source to do that. I, we agreed on that this is a good idea to move her to a permanent position at Personnel, but we wanted to bring it to council to kind of explain to you guys that although this is a new position, we do have money budgeted for it. So we're not going to be asking for any additional money, because Jason is doing a dual role. We have money budgeted for Director of Public Works and an Economic Development Director. When he took on the dual role, we shifted a little bit, some funds from the Director of Public Works over to him, and then we have that remaining pool of money left now that we can use for him to have an assistant. So I just want to make you guys aware, this is not going to be a request for any additional funds, this has already been budgeted for. So Jason, if you have anything additional you would like to say, please take this opportunity.
I just, I agree with everything you said. Darcy is amazing. You know, when you work in, in, in Public Works or Economic Development in a municipality where everything changes every day, there's, there's, in, in my office, there's nothing that's highly repetitive. It's not like we're, we're taking the bills and processing them every day, although we do do that. That's not the major function. It's, it's talking to people and trying to come up with solutions for multiple problems that, that you're faced with every day. And it's, it's really exceptional when you find a person that on day one is also a problem solver, and so just a little testimony about her, she comes in day one, I said, hey, we need to be working on these types of things. I'll have to, you know, here's the O drive where we share, share, save a lot of our information, and I said, we're going to be doing research on this. And the first day, she literally took initiative and was in the O drive and found the data that we needed to discuss to make a decision, without me offering the step-by-step direction for how to do that. So Darcy is an amazing individual. She has a degree in Economic Development, has spent a lot of time in the hospitality industry, so working with hoteliers, timeshare, that type of thing. She had a stint with Disney. So she's, she's got an excellent background, is an excellent person to work with, and it's highly needed in, in the city to make sure that we are catching up on some of the things that we just hadn't been able to attend to over the, you know, a number of the past few years. So I appreciate it, and I would certainly appreciate your, your vote to approve this position.
So with that being said, as I said, we, we discussed this at Personnel, we all agreed that this was a, a good change to move her from limited to permanent time. So my motion would be to approve the reclassification of the Municipal Services Specialist from a limited-term position to a permanent position, and make that change effective January 1st of 2025.
Okay, we have the motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second? Second from Mr. McCarthy, is there discussion?
I have a question, more too. So Melanie, you had mentioned that Jason has taken on dual roles. So do we have a plan going forward to have Jason remain in the dual role for 2025?
At, at the moment, that is the plan for him to continue in the dual position, but this is an item that Personnel is reviewing and, and monitoring, and so if we need to make adjustments, Personnel is very involved in that.
Okay, so if the decision is made where those, that role is split, how does that affect the Municipal Services Specialist? Is that a, a role that she will do things for the clerk, or, you know, because it says Municipal Services, it doesn't say Economic Development and Department of Public Works?
So we originally hired the, the role of Municipal Services with Tess when she came on board, and the intent of the role is to have someone that's able to fold or to serve in, in any department where there is a need. So it really is a utility-type person that can function in that role. Given the transition with the dual role and, and everything that we're going through organizationally, it's uncertain what things might look like in the future, so we wanted to maintain a level of flexibility. And as Melanie was alluding to, with, this is not a new, new expense. It's not actually creating new positions, because we're just, we're re-titling essentially a position. So we're not creating additional jobs within the city that haven't already existed. It's just a different title. And so I, I think if in the future it was determined that there wasn't going to be a dual Public Works and Economic Development Director, we would have to look at Darcy's role and see how she would fit best and where she could serve the city, but she certainly has the capacity to serve in any place where there is a need, from what we've observed thus far. And realistically speaking, we know that there are certain positions that are incredibly difficult to fill. Public Works Director is certainly one of those. And at this point, we are, we have not identified any, any deficits or deficiencies that make this an inappropriate structure.
Okay, because my concern is you're saying that the funding for this position to make it permanent is partly coming from the fact that Jason is doing two roles being paid for, for one, right, basically? So if we do separate those two, then the funding source for this position disappears.
Not entirely, because there would still be, right now, he's being compensated for holding dual roles. If those were separated, his compensation or whoever held either of the positions would be adjusted. So it's not that we would be starting from zero, but you're right, in the future, if that was a change, it certainly would be something that we would need to plan and budget for. Does that make sense?
I mean, like I said, it's just, you know, as far as doing this at this point, you know, it just makes it for a little unstable going forward if we are not clear on what happens between Jason's dual roles.
Agreed that we don't have the crystal ball to know what could change or what could
happen, but with the data that we have now, this is working. But what we know isn't working is not providing the additional administrative support. He's not going to be able to be successful in a dual role, nor would anyone, without having that additional support. So we either would, to your point, need to make the decision where we can't do a dual role, or we have to provide the additional support unless we want to set it up to fail. I, I would think is a fair characterization of the situation, but I defer to the Personnel Chair.
I agree.
And I, I would also like to take the opportunity to point out, in your packet, there is a little table in there that does show total number of employees. This is truly an approximation. In 1995, there was a report done by an outside organization that reviewed the city's organizational structure and provided some really good data, so I'm very confident in that 1995 number, I'm confident in our number for today, which does include if Darcy's position were to be made permanent. But then those other years, those were the years in between that I could find fairly good data, recognizing we've had multiple payroll software changes, both the city and the utilities, and the utilities and library are both included in these numbers and their employees. So there have been fluctuations up and down in staffing levels, and this is probably a conservative estimation of those numbers for the mid-years, but wanting to be conservative rather than paints a picture that's, that's not accurate. Those are the figures that I've been able to, to get thus far, given the change in payroll and a lack of historical documentation on staffing.
So one more question. So given the title of Municipal Services Specialist, and it's been mentioned that she has worked in, you know, different departments, so because at this moment, her, her skill set and the need is there for Economic Development and Public Works, but, should that role change and need is elsewhere? She can't do, or is her job description going to be specifically for Economic Development and Public Works?
It's certainly focused on providing that administrative support to Economic Development and Public Works, but already, just since she's been a limited-term employee, she, to cover some vacation time, she's worked in the clerk's office for a week and did property tax collection. So she's already serving in other departments to help out where it's needed.
So her job description won't be so specific that she couldn't do that?
Right, and it'll really be based on the demand or the needs of the departments that she's primarily serving. So if she's not able to provide that help, I'm not going to request that she's, that she does and harm a department.
So when Tess filled that role, she did quite a bit of work in the clerk treasurer's office, because that's where the need was at the time. It's the same job.
Exactly.
It's just that the individual currently filling in is helping with Economic Development, because that's where the need was when she came on board. So that can be adjusted.
Yes.
And you just mentioned that she's already helped in the clerk treasurer's office. Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
So in that vein, would there be an ability for her role then to be a split role? Meaning she could work part-time in economic development at the same time that she is helping out in the clerk's office?
Yes.
Okay. I just thought I'd ask.
Well, and I, so from a budget standpoint, right now, her wages are being paid, they would be paid for through a split of economic development and public works. But for like one-offs or short-term things, we wouldn't go with change in coding or anything, but it is a versatile position.
Right, because it'd be a salary position.
It's not, it's hourly, not salaried.
If, even if it went to permanent?
Correct. It's still an hourly.
Thank you, thank you.
And I just want to make sure it is clear, it's, it's not just economic development that she assists with, it is public works as well. And so she's really been a diverse person, so it's, it's clerk's office, she's been assigned tasks by Ashley from the administrator's office, she's, and she's done multiple tasks on economic development and public work. So she is truly a, a person that's able to be a specialist and diversify and do a lot of things well.
Does she know how to teach?
She's not available.
Okay.
Further discussion?
So I'm, I'm kind of wondering what the difference is between a limited term and permanent position besides the expiration date? I mean, is there a difference in perks and fringe benefits that would affect the, the cost of this position?
Yes.
Is that been taken into account?
Yes. Yes, we sat down and we figured out what it would be for her wage benefits. So anytime we look at a hiring someone, we always look at their benefits of if they took all the benefits we had available. So we always budget for, you're going to take health insurance, dental insurance, you're going to take all of it. And then if the employee doesn't, then that's a cost savings to the city. But it's better to budget for all the benefits that an employee could take and have the funds available than not budget for it. And then they come back and say, I need a family health insurance plan. And we're like, ooh, we didn't budget for that. So we always try to make sure that we allocate enough funds to cover all the benefits that the employee is eligible to take.
What is the difference then between limited term and a permanent employment as far as benefits go?
So she will now be eligible for pretty much all the fringe benefits, because I believe as a limited-term employee, she wasn't eligible for any benefits. Like she didn't get, not even paid holidays, nothing. And now she'll be eligible for all city benefits. Limited-term employees, they do have an expiration date. So it was December 31st was when she was originally hired. We said that's all that we're at right now, planning on having this limited-term position for. But she has proved to be such an invaluable employee, we really don't want her to leave and go somewhere else. And we, we do have a need for it, so we'd like to bring her on, on board as a permanent employee.
So no additional funds, this covers all of it?
Correct. What's in the budget, it covers wages and all fringe benefits that she would be eligible for.
Okay, further discussion? All right, we'll need a roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Congratulations, Congress. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda, Plan Commission, Recommendations in Action. Item 12, Application of the Richland Hospital for a Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Pharmacy at 451 North Park Street, which is Tax parcel ID 276-dash-1696-dash-0900. Okay, a little bit interesting here. Actually, what happened is when the hospital made it known to zoning that they intended to put a pharmacy in their building where one had existed for many years until just recent months, they asked zoning if any permits were required. And when Matt did his job and looked into it, yes, the building is zoned residential, not commercial. Therefore, a commercial business in the building needs a conditional use permit to operate. So Matt let them know that they needed a conditional use permit. And on research, it doesn't, we may be wrong, because it was many years ago, but it doesn't appear as though the prior proprietor there was ever informed or had such permit. Would you find that accurate, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Bruce Raisler, the hospital administrator, asked the question. Matt Williams, zoning administrator, did his job, gave him the answer. The hospital came down, filled out the appropriate paperwork applied for conditional use permit, did the public hearing at Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission unanimously recommended to the City Council that the council approve the application for the conditional use permit to allow a pharmacy at 451 North Park. At this point, I will entertain a motion to do so. Motion from Mr. Downs, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tepley, is there discussion?
Did you say the hospital's zoned residential?
It is, because it's in a residential neighborhood. And actually, quite a bit of that block, if you go back in time, several houses were torn down off that block. And they just left it zoned the way it had been, because the entire neighborhood surrounding it is residential.
Got it.
Yeah, we asked that question in zoning, and actually, Mr. Paul Corcoran attended and actually offered the explanation, as that they, basically, they were getting the hospital, the old high school torn down, grant money, this and that. It's just easier to leave it the way it was, so they left their residential 25 years ago. Okay, further discussion?
So 451 North Park Street, that is the hospital?
Yes, the hospital and clinic, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Further discussion? Okay, we'll need a roll call.
Ruth?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, item 13, Application of the Richland County for a Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Communication Structure on Tax parcel ID 276-dash-1696-dash-0900, which is Tower Hill. Can we get the microphone to Mr. Matt Williams? Matt, please tell the council what the county wants to build on Tower Hill.
So it'll actually house the new communication system for the police department, the county, any emergency services. So the structure is going to house all the, I guess, wireless, your Peters, all that up there. So it is a new building being constructed, the tower's just getting added onto with a satellite. So that is some of that.
Some of that, folks. That was a good answer. That was a good answer. Okay, and again, this application for this conditional use permit did come before the Utility Commission. Then again, we did the public hearing, and once again, the Commission unanimously recommended to the council to approve the application of Richland County for a Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Communication Structure on Tax parcel ID 276-dash-1696-dash-0900, which is Tower Hill. And I'll entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, is there discussion?
Out of curiosity, do we have the number of times that that tower has been jolted by a bolt of lightning? I'm just wondering if that would have any disruption in the services that, that you're describing that it would serve? Or the, Mr. Gall, the shape?
They're, they're already in the US Cellular building, right next to it, with the new radio tower. It's just a separate building to house the county's Peters.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
Questions, or any further discussion?
So the Walters can still wait in there.
Further discussion? Okay, here we go, let's have a roll.
Chambers?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Next is Public Safety Committee, Recommendations in Action, Mr. Kevin Melby.
Public Safety met last night and was presented with two municipal taxi licenses, one from Town Taxi and Mr. Burke and the Running Incorporated and Mr. Running. Both were approved by Public Safety, and my motion to approve both licenses today, tonight.
Okay, motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs. Pause. Please name the two companies again.
Town Taxi and Running Incorporated.
Okay, Tony Burke from Town Taxi, please stand up. Everybody knows who's here. Okay, go ahead. Do it up. Justin Running from Runnings, please stand up. There we go. So we have representation here from both companies, gentlemen. Thank you for attending tonight. We have a motion in a second, is there discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next on the agenda is Appointments to Committees, Commissions, Boards, and Confirms. Don't have any tonight. And that brings us to public comment, and I have three. And the first one we're going to go with is Suzanne Fish.
I'm part of Simons Rec Foundation. And when Kyle Ewing came on board, I don't remember if he was in Boston or wherever, they said they used and did great income from the favorable folks, the kids. Well, the foundation supplied Simons with their three pieces of water inflatable pool rafts, I guess that can be called. So on Saturday, September 25th, there is going to be open free to the public, a two-hour swim use for the kids. If you don't have kids, borrow one, or go and get one. I am taking on the fact of advertising, just got this printed today, so I'm going to wallpaper the city. We want Simons on Saturday afternoon, September, or I'm sorry, January 25th, to be full of young guys, say September 4th. January, January, I'm sorry. That's a plan. Plan, yeah. Play it good again in September. So anyway, please, please, come out. I haven't had time to look at this, I've been out of town all day. Music, popcorn, swimming inflatable pool rafts, and lots of fun. So please, two to 12. Look forward to seeing you all there. I'm going to be there, take a head count, I think, so I want to be, I want to be having troubles giving up the numbers. Bring your kids. I was out and watched the first time, and I wish I was 10, 12, 13 years old. I went and, I personally inspected them when they first arrived, because actually, these are not used during the rigorous swim times, because these three pieces take the center of the pool. So it's the private parties. So this is a public, open invitation for the community. Borrow a kid, borrow a grandchild, come on out there, be there. See ya.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Tony Burke.
I didn't realize I was next. So I prepared zero tonight. I came three months ago, beginning of October, with a packet of papers, and there was no podium, and I was fumbling all over. Tonight I decided I was going to wing it. I came here with my why three months ago. I had a list of people, Ruth, Keith, the people I drive around town in the taxis. That's, that's my why. I do what I do. I'd be curious to hear his. My reason for being here tonight is I'd like to hear your why, or her why, because I could have saved the city $10,000 and these people a lot of time if I would have just known what I needed to do different, who I could talk to to do something different. My 82-page pamphlet with the RFP, and it says, you know, you got, you can't talk to people on the committee, who's in the committee. You can't talk to employees of the DOT. So I just locked myself in a room for three weeks and write a proposal. And I get handshakes and get told you're doing good and we need you around, but think about something real quick, okay? In three months' time, in three months' time, I've started from scratch. Now granted, I have 30 grand in the hole just to apply for the, the proposal, for the contract. But you all just approved $10,000 for him to operate two weeks, half a month, and you expect me to compete on $3 a ride? I'll be, Melissa and I, my wife, we'll be fine on our own. I'll make just as much as I did when I worked for him. I'll be okay. But the elderly and the disabled people in town deserve that. They deserve timely rides, they deserve courteous rides, they deserve to not get scolded when they adjust a headrest in a van. They deserve a driver that knows their name, and an owner of a company that knows their name, where they live, what building they're at, who lives around the street from them, what time their doctor's appointments are. I can't do that. I, I can't do that at $3 a ride, and I can't compete without some sort of help.
When we were, Tony, yeah, when you and I were talking earlier tonight, you just sort of alluded to it a minute ago. You wanted to know who you could talk to, correct?
I, yeah, I haven't spoke to anybody.
Hold on, Tony, hold on just a second. Mr. Wendell? Mayor, City Council, City Administrator, City Attorney. Mr. Burke, free to speak to us on this?
He's a constituent of the city. I, I'm not sure what guidance was provided in the RFP. I, I'd have to read that, and I have not done that.
Don't you think you should have?
Well, not necessarily. If it's been issued by the state, then it goes through a rigorous legal review.
Melanie, have you read the RFP?
Have I?
Yeah.
No.
Have any, have any of you? Have any of you read my protest? Anybody know what's in it? Why I protested the decision?
I have no answer to that.
Do you know what's in it, Ash?
So as part of the RFP, like with many RFPs, there's a, there are requirements about communication. So to your point about communicating during the RFP process, communication needs to be done, excuse me, in writing and submitted to the individual that's listed in the RFP, and then that communication needs to be shared with anyone that has an interest in, in the solicitation. And so that is why communication is limited during this process. And this process is dictated by the Federal Transit Administration, not by the city, and really not even by, by the state necessarily. The state has to enforce the federal standards, so they're, they're ensuring that municipalities or anyone that's going to receive federal dollars for transit is complying with federal standards, and they're a technical assistance to those, those award applicants.
So what I'm understanding then is that Town Taxi will not or is not intended to get the contract because of the DOT? Because of something the DOT said, because of something the DOT didn't approve of?
This is, yeah. To get into that level of nuance, I think it would be a problem.
But don't you think, don't you think it is, don't you understand?
Give me a second here. This, that's an agenda item. This is public comment. Mr. Wendell just told you, if you want to talk to him, you can do that? So that's like a more complex position that public comment is intended to do, if you'd like to meet with somebody up here, we can do that.
So, okay, but so there's supposed to be a committee put together that, that scored these proposals? And now we're being told it was a DOT decision? Like I didn't speak to anybody or ask anybody for help, because I was told there was going
Tony, as I just said, that's way beyond the scope of public comment. If you want to meet with any of us and do that conversation, we'll do it. Okay?
Mm-hmm. You asked, you asked me to not get heated, and I'm, I'm not getting heated. But I feel like we deserve answers, and our customers deserve better.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Okay, Heidi Sheer.
I am one, I'm Heidi Sheer. And I am not happy with the transit right now because of the fact that my husband, he calls for a taxi and he can't get through a taxi. And the only way we can get through to somebody is we have to reach out to Tony to get some help so we can get a taxi to do it to point A to point B. We try to get ahold of the transit. We try to talk to the supervisor up there in Marola. And he gives us, we can't even talk to him. He tells us to go to a different area, or they go to a different area. And we can't even get through. And it makes it hard for us.
Thanks, Heidi.
And I'm very upset.
Thank you, Heidi. Okay. I convince everybody to hand for public comment that filled out the form to do so. Brings us to the next agenda item, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Melby, is there a second? Missed out. Ms. Tepley? It's the third time I've done that. Ms. Tepley and Ms. Walters, one more favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Close it there. Next time, he's Mr. Tepley.